Welcome to the City of West Miami Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of March 30th, 2015. Members present are Hibeito Gonzalez.
Here.
Eugenio Gonzalez.
Here.
Álvaro Lurido.
Here.
Diana Rio.
Here.
And also present is Juan Pena, Planning and Zoning Director, and Jose Villalobos, City Attorney, and myself, Joe Paz, Chairperson. Good evening. This evening under your overall business you have the approval of the minutes from the March 24th, 2015 meeting.
I make a motion to approve.
I second the motion.
Okay, on the motion, Hibeito Gonzalez.
Yes.
Eugenio Gonzalez.
Yes.
Álvaro Lurido.
Yes.
And both myself and Ms. Rio were excused at meeting, so we will not be voting.
Okay.
On the new business, first item is a public hearing. Agenda item number one, special use permit for plan development, 2015-001. Property addresses 2009 through 2099 Southwest 67th Avenue and 2000 to 2060 Southwest 66th Avenue, West Miami, Florida, 33155. Applicant is Gables Gate 2 LLC from the Estates Company. The applicant requests a special use permit for plan development for the property at the above address. The property totals 279.40 feet wide by 284.11 feet long. In addition, the vacating of Southwest 21st Street right-of-way, which is 50 feet by 140 feet in the A District and 50 feet by 120 feet in the C District. For the total acreage for the C parcel is 1.01 acres, and the total acreage for the A apartment parcel is 1.05 for a combined total of 2.6 acres. The parcels of land are within the mixed-use corridor. The applicant is requesting to build an eight-story building on the front parcel and a five-story building on the rear parcel surrounding the three-story parking garage with one underground parking level. The building consists of 166 residential units and 66 live-work units for a total square footage of 2,472. This is under zoning ordinance 282, Section 2B, 4.23, 4.3, 4.32-4. This is a public hearing. It was announced and mailing went out to 500 radius feet around the property to the property owners.
All who testified, will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me?
I do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. I did.
Okay, we may hear from the applicant on this issue.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Chairman. Board members Felix Lozarte with offices at 3250 Northeast First Avenue. Joining me tonight is Mr. Roberto Suris, who is one of the principals from the estate companies, who is the parent companies doing this development. Also is Mr. Tony Castro and our traffic engineer, Richard Garcia, to answer any issues regarding traffic that this board may have. Staff gives this application a positive approval. We've been meeting with them and working with them over the course of the last, I would tell you, 18 to 20 months, and I think you've seen some of our buildings start taking off the ground on 67th Avenue and also on 57th Avenue. Not only are we diligent in pursuing the construction, but also we're very sensitive to the neighbors, the surrounding neighbors, to make sure that when we're going through the construction process, that we, you know, take care, make sure that things are done in a way that it doesn't affect the abutting property. The two buildings that you see, one of them is Phase 1, which is the Gables Gate Tower. That's the one that you currently see that's being erected off 67th Avenue. And next to it, on the southern, on the northern side of the road, is the Gables Gate Tower 2. And that's the building that's before you, and that's the item that's before this board for you to consider to give this special use permit to allow us to continue the development. The building is 222 units. It's eight stories in height. The, I guess, the unique thing about this particular building is that a few months ago, we went before the city commission, and we had a portion of the abutting right-of-way, 21st Street, vacated. And we are going to use that 21st Street to place an entrance feature for both Tower 1 and Tower 2. And we're also going to have a park in the, on the eastern side of that road, which the city has already vacated. And then we are using, as far as for the FAR and as far as for density purposes, we're using the portion of that road into our calculations. And that's part of the record. We've met with Mr. Pena to discuss this, and staff is giving it a positive recommendation. I don't know if Robert, you'd like to add anything else?
I think the only thing, Robert Suris, the only thing I'd like to add is that by providing that closure on 21st Street, that is basically absorbing two-thirds of the cars that are going into both of these buildings, which will have to come in only through 67th Avenue. So we have a basement and a second floor of parking. And the bulk of the traffic is now focused through this main entrance going to 67th. So concerns about traffic going through the community and stuff like that are significantly eliminated by us, you know, directing our traffic towards 67th. You know, the buildings are pretty similar in design. It's an eight-story and a five-story. We've transitioned down to the residential in the back. And we've tried to make it as pedestrian-friendly as well as possible. We're finishing, we have, it's gonna have a park within that street that just got dedicated. So, you know, that will have less impact on city parks because we have all the facilities on site. We have, the buildings are highly amenitized. They have gyms, they have pools, they'll have a park, they'll have a doggy park within that street. So the impact on the city should be less. We believe that our residents will stay within these buildings. So I think those are all important things that I would think that, you know, we've really thought about how we, you know, we're increasing density, obviously, to this area, and we wanted to have as least amount of impact as possible.
Mr. Suris, could you state your address for the record?
Sure. 4949 Southwest 75th Avenue, Miami, Florida.
Thank you. Okay, I had a quick question. Is that park, is that open to the public?
No, no. It's a private, we're calling it a park, but it's really a facility and amenity for the residents.
Okay.
Yeah. It's on, it's on private land now, so, you know, it's really an amenity to the buildings.
Okay, and Mr. Pena, that's like Mr. Suris stated, that is a done deal. The commission already approved that.
They approved the vacating of the road. Yes.
Okay, so that's not to be addressed here?
No.
Okay, before we open up the public hearing, any comments from the board?
One is the traffic study for the impact of the road closure, which proves positive to the neighborhood to the east and puts all the traffic counts onto Southwest 67th Avenue, the majority of the tenants from that building and from both buildings. And also, there was an independent one done for Gables Gate 2, which also speaks to the volume of traffic coming out of that unit individually and then cohesively with the other one. Both are positive results on the level of service for that roadway. Mr. Garcia is in the audience if you have any other questions regarding traffic.
I had a question regarding the entrance on 67th Avenue. That would remain open, correct? No gate in the future, security gate?
No, there's no gate because, you know, this has been reviewed by Dade County Public Works as well. And based on traffic counts going in and out, we're not going to have any kind of security because it backs up into 67.
On 67.
So we have the stacking of that, you know, the anticipated stacking is going to be inside 21st Street.
Okay.
Right.
And only the front part is vehicular, correct?
Yes.
So this part, from here on, is just?
It's just that little park, yes. It's in an area that's intended for like doggy park, barbecue area, just meditation area. Yeah, so the front portion, the front half will be for vehicular traffic, for our buildings. You know, it'll be, they'll have signs that'll say "residents only" to avoid people turning on that street, you know, by mistake. But there's a turnaround there. It's designed, it's gonna be designed with a 50-foot turnaround so they can get out if they do make a mistake. So.
And obviously-
Been approved by Dade County Fire, which governs, you know, the fire department for Dade County is the one that serves as the city of West Miami. So they've reviewed it and approved it. It's gone through, you know, all of the county departments for public works, traffic, and fire.
Okay. And Dermos, correct?
Yeah, and Derm. And Derm. Derm has also reviewed it.
Okay, I need a clarification on one of these points on the staff report. It says that the total units allowed is 156, and the present building scenario has 222.
Correct.
Does this mean that they're going over and they're asking for?
No, the overage units, the 60-plus additional units are from the area of the commercial and the office space that is in the building allowed square footage.
Okay.
But since those will be live-work units, they still classify them as part of the commercial.
Okay.
Correct?
Yeah, so the code, this West Miami's code allows for a certain percentage of retail units and commercial units, above and beyond the density of the residential. The live-work, the city passing ordinance that allows live-work units, so you can have that space converted into a live-work unit, still be considered commercial and fit within the zoning code. So it's not an increase of density. It's, those units' usage is commercial and retail. So those folks will be able to get an occupational license and have a business there, run their business from there.
Okay.
And that's something that's becoming more and more popular throughout Dade County because, you know, I think, I saw the other day, Dade County is like number 10 in the country for people working from home. Something like 25, 30% of the population physically work from home. So this concept of live-work has become, you know, very, very popular.
And just for the record, the allowed uses in that live-work unit is specified in the ordinance. They're mostly attorneys, real estate, dressmakers, painters that have their studios at home, stuff like that.
It's kinda restrictive so that it's industries or businesses that do not really generate significant traffic. We don't really want people coming to the buildings. It's people, you know, it's draftsmen's for architects' office, architects, engineers, people that do work but really don't have a lot of visitors coming in. You know, we don't allow medical offices, or the ordinance doesn't allow medical offices, which generate a lot of traffic. So it's designed to allow uses that do not create that problem.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the next question I have is in that same bullet point towards the bottom that says, "The rear building meets the entire required 20-foot setback to the east. The north setback is at 15.9 and 20 feet is required, 25 feet is required." Am I reading that wrong?
Where's that?
Because "and 25 feet is required" has like another bullet point, or here. It's here.
Right.
The north setback at the 15, is it 15 feet nine inches? And another bullet point, and 25 feet is required.
You're correct. Because there's residential homes across on the north side. So they are seeking a variance for that portion of the building.
On the north, so on this side?
Oh, great. Here. I don't want to copy mine.
15.9.
Hmm? Yeah. That's a difference. Mr. Pena, approximately how many residential homes are affected on the north side? Most of that is commercial property.
No, from the, that divisional line that you see on the aerial map, to the east, you probably have three homes that are, might be facing that part of the building.
Okay. Along 20th Street?
Correct.
That side, that side, that section there in the back facing 66, and then those are lined with townhome units. So if you look at the building, that's actually a one-story structure. That then goes into a five-story structure. So that backside, that back section is kinda lined with townhomes. It's like the existing building, if you guys have had a chance to swing by there, the rear and the two sides up to the commercial line is lined with townhomes.
All right.
If you notice our building, you don't see our parking structures, which, you know, it's very residential looking. You don't see three, four stories of parking. Our parking is all underground. It's all contained within the center of the building. So it's aesthetically pleasing all around, you know, for the residences because it's residential looking. It's not, it doesn't look like a commercial building.
Okay. Any comments, further comments from the board before we open up the public hearing?
No.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Any members from the audience wish to address the board?
Yes, we have one speaker card for Leon Rosio, 6536 Southwest 22nd Street.
21st Street? You can come in here. You got a back.
Leon Rosio, 6536 Southwest 22nd Street. Okay. I came over here because no matter how beautiful everything is in paper, I have to live with it. So it's a lot of questions and a lot of things that you have to get in writing and make sure that it be done. I lived over there 50 years, so I know exactly what's going on over there. First of all, if you're gonna get all the traffic into 67th Avenue, you have to come out with a traffic light. There's no way in hell, then you don't have, if you don't have a traffic light, you won't have an accident over there, for sure. Secondly, if they're gonna have the business, then try to create profit for certain people and everything, and they say they don't wanna have doctor's office, you better get it in writing. See, because you've been, gone away years ago. We thought on that, about the amount of space, the amount of business that they had to have over there, about how many parking spaces. And all of a sudden, they have business over there, then they overflow the parking space. Okay? And the whole, all those businesses are jammed sometimes. And they are dentists, they are accountants, they are travel officers, and they, between the employees and the people who come on a given time, they overflow those parking spaces. Now, you're talking about, like they say, about 236 units. I even came prepared, I just wanna, I want to hear what they have in store for us, and I just wanna bring it up to you. Between the living units and the business unit, you have to think about at least two spaces of parking, plus visitors, plus handicap. And you're talking about, you have to think a little bit more than 500 parking spaces. That's counting that they're gonna be one customer at a time on the business. During the day, okay, between the people who wanna live in that building and the people who wanna work in that building, you probably have more than 10% of the population of West Miami there. Just think about it. We got the city is over 4,000 people. If you put two people per, I mean, three people per apartment, plus two people per the business, plus the customer, at a given time, you're gonna have more than 10% of the population of West Miami just in one, in two blocks. I don't mind the buildings. They're done. They changed the zoning. It was done. And I don't fight dumb deals. I mean, that's stupid. I have my share of problems with the construction, but they've been very polite about the way they have done it. I had to redo all my garden because the dust kill all my flower plants and everything. But again, it's done deal. Now I wanna see what kind of problem I wanna have after that. Because the entrance of the building on 22nd, they're gonna be on 22nd Street. And then the exit gonna be on 21st. So the exit of both of the buildings gonna be on 21st. They're gonna close 21st. They're gonna pump everything out into 67. Just think that at least 100% of each building gonna be coming out and trying to get in 67, getting to work. You need a park, you need a traffic light over there. We're gonna have an impact on the schools in the area. You have to find out, you know, how much our schools can take. I think we can work it out and get the buildings and get it into the school. But it's a lot of little things that have to be signed, like what kind of office they're gonna have over there, what kind of amount of parking space. Because when they don't have a parking space and a customer come complaining they couldn't find a parking to park and come and do business, then they're gonna tell the employees, "Park outside." And they're gonna be parking all over the place over there. Because it's happening, it's happening in all the neighborhood. And that's what I don't want. I want to get everything straight now before all this is done and get it over with. So you have to find out what kind of office they're gonna have in writing, because words, this day disappear. So I know, I know how it is on the things. You have to have it in writing. You have to make sure that they have enough parking space for that amount of person. The building is beautiful, okay? No doubt about it. It's a lot better than what we have right now. But it's always the day after. Honeycomb is great, but the first day that two people start fighting to be on the bathroom and be the first is when reality comes. And reality gonna come right after they finish the building. And people, you are the only person in between. What's gonna happen to us and what they're gonna do? Please make sure, it's a lot of ideas. I mean, I just, I even came prepared. These are the ones I thought about it just by sitting over there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rosio. Mr. Pena, for the record, it's 67 live-work units.
66.
66, okay. And the uses are limited by the city's ordinance?
That's correct.
So?
It's already in writing.
It's already in writing.
The city, the city is the one that restricts the uses.
Okay. And as far as parking overflow, I guess we got no real control over that, aside that if it becomes a problem, perhaps the city can install resident parking signage on your swales in that block if it becomes a problem.
When you come to that, I already got the problem.
Okay.
When I have to go to the city and do something about it, it's already, I already got the problem. I'm trying to avoid to have the problem. I'm too old. I can't, I get upset. And you don't want an old man to get upset. I can die, and my dad gonna be over there.
I don't want that to happen.
Okay, you don't want that. You wanna stop wearing black to the meetings and everything. Just, you know, what I'm trying to do is avoid the problem before it started. I don't want to have a sign in front of my house, "No parking." I just wanna live in peace like I lived in that same property for 50 years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rosio. Does anybody else from the public wish to speak? Mr. Rosio, just make sure you fill one out for me, too.
Okay, I will.
And your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Thania Rosio, 6536 Southwest 22nd Street. I live in the same house. We've been married for 50 years. We bought that house when we first got married. And I feel this way. It's a done deal. We have gone, we have had a severe impact with the construction of the first tower. But the people that we have been in communication with, and I believe a gentleman is here, Tony?
Nice to meet you.
This gentleman has been, he has gone beyond to try to make our situation livable. It's been, it's been hard. It's been disastrous. One of the things that has mostly affected us is the detour in the traffic situation. I have sat in the front of my house, I have my computer, and I'm looking out window onto 22nd Street. In a period of one hour, I have counted 47 cars that have turned into my driveway and backed out because the detour signs have been improperly installed from day one. Our street, 22nd Street, was closed and it's one-way. It's eastbound. And I know for a fact that this other building is gonna add to that situation. What I'd like to request, and like we said, it's a done deal, and I know that, you know, and it is better than what we have there, believe me. If you had to live there like we do, you would see it. But I really, really need for you to plan and work with whoever you have to work, that the traffic flow, not only when the building is constructed, but during the construction, which is the most important time for us, the residents that live directly around it, that something be done, something be corrected. Because we can't live like this. It's, it got to a point where it was dangerous. I don't, I can't tell, begin to tell you how many times we have seen cars coming in the direction that they're supposed to be, and other people who get frustrated and don't see the sign because they're not posted correctly, and there have been this far apart from a direct impact, head-on impact, numerous times. The police can't do anything. They put a one-way sign there. Right now, I have a, what they call it, a scarecrow? I have a police car that's sitting right there trying to avoid this situation. But I feel that the construction company will have a better chance of getting through to, I imagine it's Dade County, right, who's in charge of all these signs?
No, that's a private company.
No, that's a private company.
A private company? The detour, the detours?
Yes.
Well, something has to be done. Something has to be corrected. Because I don't think that the residents that are directly looking at this monster can tolerate any more of it. It's, it's just gone too far, too far. And now with the other one, and now that you say that, you know, you're closing, what, 21st Street? People would come through there, turn around, go out 21st Street. Now they find that there's no exit there to 67th Avenue. And that's made it even worse. People will turn around and go wrong way back to 22nd Street where we live and try to go on 22nd Street westbound, which is a one-way street. It is a serious, serious situation. And I like, I like to request through you, and I like to go directly to them because, like I said, I've had problems and I go over there or I give Yoli a call. She calls Tony, sends him an email. It's a blessing. They've been very cooperative, very polite. I'd like to ask them, please, if something can be done before the other building, the construction begins. Because we can't, we can't take it anymore. It's, it's, it's really serious. It's not inconvenient anymore. It's serious. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Penner, you know, be expecting calls from Ms. Rosio.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Edgar Delgado, 6556 Southwest 23rd Street. Been a West Miami resident for a little bit over 20 years. My wife has been here for 30 years and her family before her 30-plus years as well. It brings me a lot of joy and at the same time, a little bit of sorrow to have to come in front of you. And, uh, you know, such a beautiful project. And I guess we're the envy of Dade County now. Because a few years ago, there was nobody wanting to come over here. All of a sudden, we have three of these beautiful buildings. But the one thing that maybe we need to remind you all is that we were here for a long time. We were the original people that were living here that had to deal with everything that West Miami offered. And that's the reason why I moved to West Miami. That's the reason why I bought in West Miami. I wanted that neighborhood feeling for my children and for their children. So much that we planned to purchase a home for my daughter, which we did. And hopefully she'll live there one day. And it's great to see this type of project. But the problem that I have and the issue that I have is that these things go up and it's like we've forgotten about everything that it affects. It affects us. And, and to say that it won't affect traffic, to say that it's okay to close the street so that the rest of us get bombarded with that traffic is not acceptable. That street closure should not be acceptable. Not to you, not to us. That extra level should not be acceptable because we went back and forth about how, how high is too high? I'm on 23rd Street. I've, I've been affected by CVS. I've been affected by the farm store. I'm now affected by this building. And now we're gonna be affected by another building. There's no privacy anymore in that street. So the vision of West Miami is to make all of 67th Avenue nothing but residential area? Then, you know, you need to make that clear to us because a lot of us won't be around to, to see that. And then you're gonna lose us as residents, the people that have been here that long. It's beautiful. It's better than what's there, absolutely. We want, we want more people to come over with these beautiful projects. But there has to be a standard. And it has to be a standard that's good for the city and good for the residents. You're affecting our privacy. There's no privacy. I don't have any privacy. I wanted to build a pool. I'm not gonna build a pool anymore. Why would I build a pool when I have God knows how many families looking at me now? What about, what about, are there gonna be pets? Is this gonna be accepted? Pets in this, in this facility? Where are they gonna go? Where are they gonna take them? They're gonna take them to my street. They're gonna walk them through my street. They're gonna poop all over the place and nobody's gonna pick up. Every morning I wake up, every morning, I get a trash bag and have to do my whole route through all of the CVS, picking up all the trash that gets thrown out as people are walking out of CVS into my property. You don't think that affects me? You don't think that affects my kids? Do you think I wanna live like that? What, what's gonna happen when all these fellow citizens are gonna be walking around? Walking their dogs? Where are the green areas? Where are the parks? Is that planned anywhere in this, in this?
Well, uh, Mr. Delgado, the, maybe you came a little late or you didn't catch the presentation that the applicant made. But, um, they do have like a dog park there incorporated. Uh, in fact, uh, they even show so, some dogs here in this, uh...
Okay, so there will be, so there will be pets allowed?
Uh, yes, sir, I would assume they would be.
And do you think that, that, that it's gonna be to the point where they're just gonna keep them in the park? They're gonna be all over our streets. All over our streets. Through 22nd, 23rd, 25th, 24th, Coral Way, everywhere. Who's gonna pick that up for us? They're gonna pick it up? Have you been to Bayside lately? Have you been to Brickell? With the amount of dogs that are on the street? And maybe one out of five people pick up their, their dogs? Is that what you want for us? I don't want that for me. I don't wanna be walking out in my front yard, stepping on that stuff all the time. Would you like that, to, to have that in your, in your front yard?
Nope.
So, two concerns. First of all, the street closure should not even be negotiable to you. It should not be negotiable to any of us. Because that means that all that traffic is gonna go somewhere else. I guess where somewhere else is 23rd Street or 20th. And that's us, that's me. We talk about traffic studies and all these things that happen. Go, go to my street, go to 23rd Street at any time of day, just like she said. Count the many, how many cars pass by. And what we were proposed, the traffic and showing the traffic study, it wouldn't affect us. Are you kidding? Seriously? Why would you close the street?
Okay, the street, uh, vaca, uh, has already been vacated by the commission, correct, Mr. Penner? So we're not here to discuss that.
Understood, well, that's...
Pretty much has been approved already.
That is amazing to me. That is amazing to me. And hopefully, the entire thing, so, so now it's eight floors. And hopefully, and then what, nine floors, 10 floors, 11 floors and on? Do we have a standard? Do we have a standard right now?
Mr. Penner?
Yes, Mr. Delgado. The ordinance is up to eight stories. They chose to lower the first tower be, on their own, not because the city requested it. And the, the limit is eight stories. It's always been eight stories. Since 2005, it's been eight stories.
Okay, well, just asking for your consideration in regards to everybody else that lives around the street. And is the vision of West Miami is to have nothing but these beautiful buildings? Then, then great. You know, I would, I would challenge not only you, but the commission to look outside the box, get more businesses out here, get restaurants. Doesn't have to be all this. What about the population density? What about them? You're putting another 400 families into an area where maybe 200 families live right now. You don't think that'll affect the community? Absolutely, absolutely. And we want you to think about that for us, please.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, does anybody else from the public wish to speak? Okay, for the record, uh, nobody else wishes to speak from the public? Uh, any comments from the board?
I, I have a couple of comments.
Will you bring your mic, please?
Regarding, number one, landscaping. On the renderings, you show a liner of landscaping in the front and also on the north side. But yet on plan, I'm not quite sure where that landscaping...
Yeah, so if you notice, the front has Sylvester palms. So we're gonna put those palms in. We're, we're, you know, this is a, a Class A building. So everything that's being done around it, including the landscaping, is bringing in, you know, the most expensive plants, uh, to, to line it. I mean, uh, there is landscaping around the entire perimeter of the building, front, sides and back. There will also be landscaping inside the park. So these buildings will be covered, you know, to the second, third floor in lush landscaping. There's oak trees along the public rightways. Uh, one of the things that we did was, um, you know, we're planting trees in the public rightway as well. Because we want it to look as nice as possible. Every issue that has been brought up is, is issues that we've tried to address. The intent of closing 21st Street was to avoid traffic going to the residential areas. You know, we're channeling our traffic to 67th, which is a street that right now is really underutilized by traffic. It's not as, it's not a corridor that is used as, as, as frequent. Uh, and our traffic is designed that way. Currently, correct me if I'm wrong, I think 20, um, 21st and 23rd run all the way through. And the traffic is, the traffic comes from all the neighborhood through those streets right now.
No, I'm sorry. 22nd and 20th run through.
Or 22nd and 20th. So our, our, our north and south streets, which are gonna maintain, they're gonna stay open, those, those streets run into the neighborhood. Those go all the way through. The street that we close only goes back...
To 65th Avenue.
To 65th Avenue. So there's no traffic coming out through there. So closing it didn't cause any issue with residents trying to get out, but it did solve the problem of people getting into the neighborhood, which is what we're trying to avoid. The doggy situation, we're, we're, we're very confident that the reason we built a doggy park is we wanna keep people in our building. And our building has all the amenities that would wanna keep people there. The restaurants and so forth. Projects like this give you the density to attract decent restaurants because you have clients now that'll come to your restaurant. There is gonna be no trash flowing out of these buildings. These are, you know, these buildings are going to be occupied by people that, you know, are, are making good money and are not, you know, they wanna live in a good place and a, in a good, you know, middle-class residential neighborhood. They're, you know, it's, it's, it's good quality folks that we're trying to bring to the city of West Miami. What other issue was brought up?
Just for clarification, uh, the buildings on tw, the, the... Center Island of 21st Street, which is gonna become an entrance to both buildings, both buildings have entrance and exits on 21st Street.
Yeah, so, so you can't come in, in other words, if you, if you, if you are in the basement. So we, just for information purposes, you know, we have over, I wanna, I wanna give you the exact number, but we have, let's see, this building, parking, where's the parking?
369.
So we have 369 parking spaces in one building, 350 plus in the other building. So we're providing over 700 parking spaces, okay? So we have ample parking. We do not wanna have issues where our tenants go to the neighborhood. We have excess parking. So, and our parking is not designed where you see it. You can't see any one of my cars anywhere, period. So we try to make it appealing for the, for the, for the public. I mean, for the kinda project that it is, there's, we've tried to incorporate all the things that would make it flow with the residential neighborhood. So we have plenty of parking. The live-work units, the ordinance, not us, it's already in writing. There's an ordinance that's already been approved that limits, and the city has the right to refuse an occupational license to anybody that goes there that doesn't fit their criteria. So that has been looked at. We're not, we're not bringing, we're not bringing, you know, businesses that are going to create traffic problems. We don't want cars, I mean, we, if, if you all have an investment in your homes, which is very important to you, this is very important to us. This is a, this is a huge investment for us. We're gonna take care of it. We're gonna take care of the neighborhood as much as, as, as you folks. It's not that we're here to exploit anything. We, we own these buildings. These buildings are a significant investment for us. We're, we're gonna protect the neighborhood. We don't wanna create a problem. If it's a problem for you guys, it becomes a problem for us. That's not what we're looking to do.
I have a question.
I would suggest, I would suggest, excuse me a minute. As a matter of order, I would suggest for one to finish and then a question to ensue.
Okay. So getting back to Mr. Penner's comment, our basement come in, which is where the bulk of the cars are in the basements, over two-thirds of the vehicles will come in and out only through 21st. Only, only. And dealing with the traffic light, it's not even the city of West Miami that determines whether we need a traffic light or not. It's governed and controlled by Dade County. Dade County has looked at this and all the cars that are coming out of there are gonna make right turns only. In other words, no one's gonna cross 67th Avenue. It's a right turn only. So all the cars that'll come out will be right turn only. The chances of having an accident are reduced significantly when you don't have to cross the median, okay? So it's right turn only. So we have addressed the traffic issue. We've addressed the traffic light issue. Dade County is the one that, that has actually looked at our traffic reports and have done their own reviews and, and have, you know, blessed it. And, uh, you know, we try to identify everything that could possibly be an issue. We try to address it. We do, we, we, we just didn't build these things, um, you know, without all those considerations in mind. So, you know, we're open to suggestions. Our, our, our live-work units, again, are not designed and probably, you know, they're not gonna bring in traffic. And if they do, they bring it in during business hours. We have over 750 parking spaces. We're 420-some units. So we have excess, excess parking.
Just to add, again, like Mr. Surry's stated, we don't control traffic on 67th Avenue. That's reviewed by Dade County. Uh, both buildings have gone to Dade County for traffic review on 22nd Street, on 21st and on 20th. If there's light needed for any reason, trust me, they will make them install it.
Is it my question, or 22nd Street, can you tell me again?
Of course. Yes.
There's an entrance to the garage on 22nd Street.
That's correct. That's to the second floor, level of parking in, on the building.
Which is about one-third of the vehicles in each, in each building. And addressing the MOT, we have...
Entrance and exit?
Yes.
Yes. And addressing the MOT, you know, we have an MOT permit for the traffic around that perimeter. We have signs everywhere. We have people directing traffic. We have people hosing down that site every single day. And, no, not necessarily. It's not when you complain, we have the guys there all day. If you tell me the day they're not putting water and, you know, call me personal, I'll give you my personal phone number. They're there every day. I have a guy that's doing nothing but watering it down. But what happens is you have a number of people who do not observe, you know, and they wanna do what they wanna do and they come against traffic. That was a big problem at the beginning. It has become a much less problem now because, you know, people have finally gotten used to how this, how it runs. It runs basically around the site. You know, there's, there's not much staging area. We've taken one lane. The MOT permit was approved by City of West Miami and I think Dade County, I'm not sure if Dade County approved it as well, was done early on. And those signs have been kept up. You know, it says, "Do not enter one way." People don't observe the signs, you know. There's only so much we could do. You know, unfortunately, um, there's always a little pain when you do something like this. We've tried to minimize it. And we're responsive. Every time we get a complaint about something, we respond to it. We don't just let it, you know, we don't put our hands up in the air. We respond as best we can.
Okay, um, Mr. Rosio, you had a question?
Yeah. What was the number for parking space?
369 and one and close to 300. No, each. Each.
200?
360 each, more or less.
And you, you, you have to figure, I mean, math, I mean, I don't try to math. You, you're talking about you have between the working units and the living units.
Mr. Rosio, I, I would suggest to go out to the podium because otherwise we, we, we don't have a record.
And please, and please direct your questions to the board, not to Mr. Surry.
Again, Leon Rosio, 6536...
And also the applicant, the applicant to please direct your comments not to the individuals, but to the board, okay?
To the board, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Leon Rosio, 6536 Southwest 22nd Street. Again, I, I was trying to point out that you have 166 units. Plus the working unit is about 226 or 236.
222.
222.
Okay, you have to figure each living unit, they need two parking space. That, without visitors, without, uh, handicap.
Mr. Rosio, that's not how it works. I'm sorry. It doesn't work there like that here. It doesn't work like that in Miami-Dade County. There's a ratio. And depending on the number of units that each apartment has, you're required certain amount of parking spaces.
Yeah.
They've met the ratio and it can't be arbitrarily, Mr. Rosio's two for every unit. It doesn't exist. That's not what the law says. That's not what the law says.
Okay, again, sometimes the law are made in convenience to certain things, but no, reflects the real life. The real life is two persons living in an apartment, they need two cars. And if they have a, a, a boy that goes to college, that means three cars. Okay, now, let's face it, I mean, it's not what is convenience, it's not what the law says, it's what I'm gonna have after the building, the day after. When you guys are in your home, having a good time, I'm gonna have people killing my grass and, and do whatever they want. I'm trying to point out to you that the amount of space for parking, I, I'm not an expert, but I don't think it's gonna be enough. And I don't want to come over here and says, I told you so. You have to face reality, that's what it is. Either they have an overfloor garage, an overfloor parking space, somewhere, they don't have enough space, parking space, to absorb the amount of cars that you need in a, in a place like that. As simple as that. They have to come delivery for the business, they have to come visitors or a customer for those business, it's not enough. If some apartment, they only have a parking space, they have, they have to look for a parking space someplace else, as simple as that. And they're gonna say, I, I'll park over here because the law says that they can only have one, and this is my second par- parking space, your property. And that's what's gonna happen. That's what I'm trying to point out to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rosio.
Again, the, the ordinance that we go through is the Miami-Dade County Off-Street Parking Ordinance, which is throughout the whole state of Mi- of Miami-Dade, the county of Miami-Dade, and also it's a nationwide ordinance, every city uses it in the nation. We, it's not exclusive to us, it's common use.
Mr. Chairman?
May I?
You wanna let the resident speak and then? One second.
Hi, good evening. Karen Delgado, 6556 Southwest 23rd Street.
Ms. Delgado, when you finish, I need you to fill out one of the forms, please.
Sure. I just want to state, basically in concern with the building, and this is part two, the existing one is already there, I just want to take the opportunity, since this is a forum and I'm able to address you as a zoning board, to after, after the math, after this, this occurs, I want you to take it, keep in mind the ordinances, go back, review the ordinances of the city, what ordinances we have in place for our quality of life for residential, that includes, and, and what fines, and what are we gonna do with everything that we foresee is coming, and it is coming, because I can tell you, I have lived, my parents and I have lived here 40-plus years, I'm not here to speak against the project or any of such thing, I am here to address our concerns as residents for the aftermath. Because I pick up garbage, like my husband says, every day when I get home from school in a bag, plastic bag that I go get, and I pick up garbage from the CVS every day that they leave in my home. Because I refuse to take care of my home and have it looking like that, disgusting. Every day. You don't believe me, come before 3:30 that I get home, come pass by and you can see all the garbage that's everywhere. So what I urge you to do as a board is, after all this goes through, he's absolutely right about the parking, okay? You're always gonna have visitors. Come on, let's be realistic, we all know that. Where are they gonna park in our city, in our streets? They're gonna park in the grass, because that's, that's public property. That's not our property. The median, that's where they're gonna be parking. So I want you to keep in mind what is going to be our ordinances and how are we going to take care of the privacy, the properties, and all of this coming forward for our residents so that we can maintain our good quality of life, okay? Because it's gonna happen. So I'm not necessarily here addressing this, I am addressing you so that you go back and look at what we have right now in place and things that, as we are bringing up all these things, jot them down and start thinking of ways, and what are we gonna do to move the city forward so that we can all, you know, manage to live comfortably and, and, because these, these issues and concerns are, are real, and we see them and we know they're coming before they even get here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, I don't want to do the same thing you said.
Okay.
If I can, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead, sir.
You know, everybody has a concern and rightfully so for their quality of life, that's why they live in West Miami. And, you know, obviously you're entitled to come here and express your concern, and I think some, most of the concerns are really fear, fear of the unknown, what's gonna happen, how is this gonna impact us? Let me tell you what the, what the benefits are, and something that I see that here that I, I don't see anywhere else and I practice zoning, you know, throughout this county. The fact that somebody actually goes ahead and calls the city and they speak to the city manager and they say, hey, you know what, they're not doing the things they're supposed to be doing when it comes to construction. And the city manager picks up the phone and gets a developer and says, look, go out there and fix it. These are things that are unique to West Miami. If this was to happen anywhere else, I would tell you, it would, that, that would never happen. You would never call the city manager in Miami and say, hey, you know what, Related's kicking up all this construction here on Brickell Avenue, they're not gonna call George Perez. You know, lucky if, if they'll get a clerk on the phone. Here it's different. And you've heard from the residents that this developer goes out of their way. Look, it's a big project to try to fix things and to try to make things right. All, and the point of what I'm trying to tell you is the following. All these issues, people parking on the swales, people throwing out trash, all these things could be addressed because of the type of city that you live in and the type of city that you have and the type of administration that you have. Again, the parking ratios that we're using are parking ratios and calculations that traffic engineers have put together for these types of mixed-use projects. And they work. And I'm gonna tell you why they work. Because some of the live-work units that you have here, first of all, they're low-impact type of businesses. You're not gonna have a retail shop, which you have there, are very, you know, a lawyer's office, you may have a, a, an engineer, things that are all outlined in your code, things that don't really have a lot of visitors. But let me tell you what happens in these buildings. During the day, people leave to go to work, and those people that may work there and may have a guest come over or a client come in, there's gonna be plenty of space in the building at that time to park. That's why these parking ratios work. And to the extent that you start having parking issues, it's very simple to control in this city, because all you have to do is basically have no parking signs in the rear of, in, in the abutting avenues, in the abutting neighborhoods. One of the reasons that we closed this street is quite frankly, it's to create a village for these, and to isolate these, these buildings from the abutting residential areas. And the reason that we have the townhomes line the rear of this building is to create a sense of, you're not putting in a, a large building, you're putting in a townhome which is similar to a, to a single-family home, and then you go up in density. You know, this is all part of a vision. This vision is, didn't start last year or two years ago. This vision from the city came over 10 years ago, when you went ahead and you had charrettes and the previous planning board went ahead and reviewed this, the council reviewed this, this is all part of a larger vision. Now, you had a major meltdown in your, in your residential market, in your, your real estate market in Dade County, and obviously none of these things got built. Now, you have one developer who's coming in, he's putting these projects together. Look, you have the guy who's responsible for all this here. If there's a problem, if there's a concern, he's obviously gonna address them. As he's, as he's done them, you know, in, in the last few months, I could tell you, if, you know, if, if he wasn't a responsible developer, you would have these neighbors up at arms saying, these guys are, are destroying our lives. But I think they've told you, look, they're here, they're trying to make it happen. I think, yes, you have to look at a total impact for this development, but you also have to look at the positive things that this development brings. Tax revenue, impact fees, which keeps the cost of, of, of life here lower. And these are gonna be self-sustaining communities. You're gonna have, you know, they're, they pick up their garbage, they, you know, they have their water and sewer, they purchase from the city. These things create revenue, which again enhances the quality of life. And obviously, to the extent that these things are well-developed and well-designed, I think, I think it's gonna be, the impact is gonna be a positive impact. And not to overcomplicate the situation, but you have one building that's already been approved, we're basically coming to approve an identical building right next door. The exact same thing, the exact same footprint, the exact same height, every.
One story higher.
One story higher, this building. But everything else, as far as the layout of the building, remains the same. So with that, I mean, we're obviously here to answer any questions you may have. Our traffic engineer, who's an expert, is here and he could certainly address any questions that this board may have as well. But, you know, I think this is part of a, of, of a larger vision for this city.
Let me just say one thing, on the parking, the city code allows for a bonus on parking, so because we're on 67th Avenue, we could build 30% less parking than is required by, by code. And we didn't take advantage of that. In other words, we didn't go out there and say, you know what, let's not build the additional parking, you know, it's, it's gonna cost us less money to do it. That's not what we did. We understand that there has to be parking because the reality of life is people in Miami need a car. And so we have all the parking that is required by code, we did not take advantage of any parking bonus, which we could've. So, and, and like Felix said, this, this, these things are, are looked into by professionals that see it and have, and, and study it. You know, the traffic flow, when there's people in the building, when the retail gets used, when the office gets used, it's, it's a shift, but it's the same number of cars, so you don't, you, you can, you know, it, it works with, with what the code requires, you know. Cities and, and counties, you know, they, they approve these things because they've been studied, you know, they, they require a certain amount of parking, what they believe is, what they believe is, is, you know, functional building, they do not want to create problems for themselves. So that's, that's what we're doing. We're doing exactly that, we, we are not taking advantage of those bonuses. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further comments from the audience? Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and close, I can close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Any comments from the board?
Yes, I do have a question, Mr. Chairman. If I'm a resident on 21st Street East and I prefer to walk to 67th Avenue, that means I'm gonna have to go north to 20th or south to 22nd, because that 21st Street will be blocked?
That's correct.
But not for pedestrian traffic?
Yes. It's a private park.
Well, this is my point now, I got an issue on this. They will, the tenants from these buildings will be able to use our facilities, amenities, parks, schools, fire department, police department, and we won't be able to walk, if you're handicapped or whatever, to 67th to go to one of the retail stores?
That's correct.
That's an issue that was already reviewed by the city commission, so I don't know what the answer might be on that. But that was, there was a hearing and every issue was examined and that was approved.
So by the same, sorry, by the same token, the residents.
Would you bring your mic, please?
The residents of these buildings cannot go out into.
I'm sorry?
The residents of these buildings, these new buildings, will not be able to walk out of that park and walk their dogs or, you know.
Right.
Throw their trash or whatever.
Yeah, they'll have, they'll have exits. They'll have exit to 21st Street, of course.
Pedestrian.
Pedestrian traffic, yeah.
But they can come out into West Miami, but West Miami residents cannot come in?
That's correct.
How do you control that?
No, 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 no. The, you, you could, the, from that little park in the rear, on the east side of the property, you can't come in and you can't come out. It's basically, it's a park for, for the residents of, of that community, right? So if you were, if you lived in one of these towers and you wanted to go ahead and walk east, you'd have to do the same thing that the neighbors would have to do. You'd have to go on 67th Avenue and either go north or south and then take one of the parallel.
So the picket fence has no opening?
No, the picket fence won't have an opening.
It's a wall in the park, right in the back of the park is a wall.
It's a picket fence.
There's a fence, there's a fence with landscaping.
With landscape.
With landscape.
Okay.
And quite frankly, that was done as, as a buffer to your neighborhood, to the existing single-family neighborhood that was there. It was done to basically buffer you from the new residents and from the folks that were coming in.
The intent is to keep the people and the traffic from going bam.
Okay.
Well, let me explain something, this is not an issue before you at this point. You see, whether you like, whether or not the street was closed or not, that had been determined. The issue before you is whether or not this project conforms to the ordinances that we have in place in Miami, in City of West Miami. It's whether or not it conforms with Chapter 282 of the City of West Miami. And it's not whether I like it or don't like it, it's to apply the law as it's written.
Right.
We, we had an opportunity, we had an opportunity to examine all of that when we had zoning hearings and they went out to the public and.
That's a thing on everyone's, or would've been.
I'm sorry, sir, I'm addressing the panel. This had been, sort of, in 282 have been in place for many, many years. And occasionally, ordinances are reviewed, approved, or disapproved, and always, by law, it has to be published. So the fact that it might not be reaching any particular individual is not up to us to determine. Again, that's not an issue before you and it's not correct that you take that into consideration at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vialovas, for the clarification. So any further comments from the board?
Yeah, can I go back to the, this variance that you're requesting on the north side? So you're saying that it's 59 at one point, but it's actually a little bit less from the balconies and my main concern is that you're taking away a lot of the possibilities of landscaping on that side. And the way that I'm reading the plans, I just see blank space from the wall of the building, the north wall, to the street, I guess, to the property line. The actual landscaping, what is this portion, what is this area here? This is the street, property line, what is in here? Is this landscaped? Is this paved area? This is a landscaped area?
No, that's not the landscaping plan, that's just the site plan.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
But there's no landscaping plan in here, so that's why I have the question.
Yeah, it's all landscaped in there.
Okay, so this is where the landscaping is?
Yeah, if you look at your elevations, you'll be able to see the aerial view.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And just so that all the comments are not bad, I just want to commend you for stepping it back from the, from the, from the back, if you will, so that it's lower density towards the residential area and then coming higher to the front. That's something that I, I, I like and I think, I think is the right thing to do for your project and for the neighbors as well.
I think we can all agree, including the audience members, as many testified, that they are beautiful buildings without, without a doubt, very, very nicely designed. Okay, any other further comments from the board? Anybody care to make a motion?
They turned on the AC late.
Don't rush to make a motion.
I make a motion, approve?
I second.
Okay, there was a motion to approve. On the motion, Eugenio Gonzalez?
Yes.
Iveta Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Rio, Diana Rio?
Yes.
Álvaro Elurido?
Álvaro? Yes.
Okay, and I'm gonna excuse myself from voting. I did not know who the developer was until I just saw. I did not know who the developer was until I just saw him right now, but he's known to me. I work as a building inspector in Coral Gables and I've inspected his personal homes, I think two, maybe three, that he's built throughout the years, but I have not seen him in over 10 years. So I'm going to excuse myself from voting, but the motion passes.
That's not a legal conflict. He has to...
Excuse me. What is the specific reason that you're abstaining?
Mr. Suresh was, I presume, a resident of Coral Gables. And during my employment with Coral Gables, I have done building inspections in a number of homes that he's built, personal homes, if I'm not mistaken.
You may, you may recuse yourself if you have any personal benefits out of that relationship. Just because you worked in the same building or made out the same application, that does not excuse you, sir.
Okay. Then I'll vote yes. I just wanted to make it clear to my conscience and just data for the record.
Well, I want to thank you for your kindness and your, the fact that you were so frank, but that, that wouldn't, that is not a valid excuse.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Osada, it will go before the city commission on May 6.
May 6?
Okay.
Next item on your agenda tonight is agenda item number two, and that is the repeal of ordinance number 282 as amended. Ordinance number 282 of the City of West Miami, Florida, adopted in 1967, and all the amendments to ordinance 282 adopted subsequent thereto and hereby repealed, and the following zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance or the zoning ordinance or this ordinance is substituted therefore. As you know, we've been going over the ordinance 282 in order to regulate what happens in the residential areas and in the commercial areas. I don't know if you had a chance to review what you had since then and if you need additional time, but I need to know, where do I go from here? Because, again, the city commission is putting a speed skate on this because they need, they want certain items that are allowed today because of the vagueness of this ordinance to be restricted.
I don't have any problems with it. As you're aware, I was not here last meeting when a lot of the, where this was reviewed, correct? That's...
No, at the last meeting, they tabled it because they wanted a full board.
Okay. Okay. Well, I personally don't have any problems as it's written. I don't know if any board member wants to add something or suggest something?
Okay, just, just for your knowledge, there is another ordinance that's being looked at by the city commission, which they requested of Mr. Viallos. And that will be that any, any recreational equipment, such as trampolines, playsets, pools, pools, above-ground swimming pools, stuff like that be restricted from the front set-back areas of the property, which the ordinance currently doesn't talk about that, silent. So that will be incorporated into this. If it goes ahead of this one, then we'll incorporate it and make it part of this ordinance. But you will get a copy of that once Mr. Viallos is, has turned it into the city commission and they've looked at it and they're ready for everybody to vote on it.
Will we vote on it first?
Yes.
This will be a recommendation, by the way.
Correct.
You're not repealing anything, it's just a recommendation to the city commission that you have reviewed the ordinance 282. You're actually substituting 282 by amending it to a new ordinance 282.
Yeah. From now on, it won't be called ordinance 282, it'll just be called the zoning ordinance, which is easier because that way it includes all zoning changes that have been done since 1967 forward.
You have a motion for that, Mr. Chairman?
Ah, yes, we do.
I second...
Well, that will have to, well, that'll have to be on the next meeting because on the next meeting, I'll put it as a first reading and then it'll give us a chance to advertise and then bring it back to you for that.
Okay.
Okay? So as it is right now, you don't have a problem with it? Okay?
Nope. Okay, so we don't need a motion then?
No. It'll be on the next meeting when I put it in as a first reading.
Okay. Thank you. Any further items?
That's the last item on your agenda tonight.
Okay. The City of West Miami Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of March 30th, 2015 is now adjourned. It is 8:50 PM for the record.